All right, good evening, everyone. I would like to call the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, November 14th, 2011, to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unafraid and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmembers Baker, here. Galloway.
Yes.
Lennon. Piana.
Here.
And Mayor Colter.
Here, yes, thank you. We have a quorum. Councilman Lennon is, has a little under the weather this evening, has a health issue, and is not going to be able to join us, has asked for an excused absence.
Do you want unanimous support?
That would be great.
Support, support.
Thank you. Next item, the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes or corrections to the agenda? Otherwise, a motion would be in order.
I would move that we accept the agenda as presented. Support.
All right, moved by Baker, supported by Piana. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmembers Baker.
Yes.
Galloway.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Mayor Colter.
Yes, thank you. The agenda is approved. Our next item would be presentations. We have two presentations this evening, as is often the case. The Ferndale Public Schools are here to inform and educate us on what's happening in our great school system. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Stillger. I'm the Communication Specialist for Ferndale Public Schools. And I'd like to start with some fantastic news. Our Ferndale High School marching band has won their seventh state championship. They did so on Saturday, November 5th, in their Flight 3 competition. This is the seventh out of the past eight years for a state championship. We are very proud of the kids. They did a fantastic job. The music was beautiful. They won Best Caption Awards for Best Marching and Best Music, also. And we have, in last week's Friday e-news, we have a huge poster size, light up with all the information and lots of photos that we took at the competition. So if anyone's interested, it's all posted there. On the marching band topic, the marching band is going for a $50,000 Pepsi Refresh Project grant. If they won, they would be able to lower the student fees, which are currently at $425 a student, which limits how many kids can actually participate. So they would be able to lower student fees, they would be able to raise the salaries of their staff, which are not competitive with marching bands around, and they would be able to buy us the needed equipment. So, we are asking the community to visit the Ferndale Schools Facebook page and see the links for the Pepsi Refresh Project. There are three ways to vote. You can text, you can do Facebook, and you can vote through their website. And you can vote three times a day through the end of November.
Three times a day?
Three times a day. So, we thought it was one, it's three. So, we are really hoping that the community can really get behind the band. They started out in 135th place, and we're down to about 30th. So we've made huge progress in a week. So we think we can do it. We just really need the community behind them.
And where can they get more information, again?
The Ferndale Schools Facebook page. There's a few links posted there. You can vote right from the link. So, we really hope the community will come out and support our band. They do fantastic work. They're a great thing for the Ferndale Schools. We also had a wonderful event this afternoon. Kelsey Wilson, a Ferndale High School senior, signed her National Letter of Intent to play volleyball for Akron University. She received a full ride scholarship, tuition, room and board, books and supplies, to go play volleyball for them. She also, she's a fantastic student athlete. She's a 3.83 GPA at Ferndale High School. Very proud of her. I think she'll do fantastic things, and she's already looking to be able to play next year on their team. So, that was great. The Mousetrap, which is the Ferndale High School's fall play, has three performances left. They had to cancel last Saturday's performance, but it's been rescheduled for this Friday. So Friday and Saturday, they are performing at 7:30 PM at Ferndale High School, and Sunday at 3:00 PM. Tickets you could buy at the door. They're $5 for adults, $4 for students and seniors, and $3 for children 12 and under. The Ferndale High School is also doing a canned food drive last week and this week. Donations can be dropped off at Ferndale High School or the Harding Administration Building. The students have partnered with Gleaners, and our goal is to raise 7,500 pounds of food or $2,500, or a combination of both, with $1 equalling three pounds of food. So if anyone in the community is willing to donate, you can drop off information at the goods at Ferndale High School or Harding, and just non-perishable items. The Ferndale Education Foundation is hosting a wine tasting this Friday, November 18th, at The Loving Touch, from 7 to 10 PM. It's $20 per person. For $20, you get unlimited wine samples and hors d'oeuvres. You can pay at the door. And if you are unable to make it, you can order bottles of wine, and 15% of the orders will go towards the FEF. And we have order forms and flyers and more information on the Ferndale Education Foundation's Facebook page. We are starting to think about kindergarten in the Ferndale Schools for next year. And we have tours set up at Roosevelt and Kennedy from now through February. About every other week, you can tour at either school, or you can contact either school to take a tour. What we created this year, it's called a Three-Step Guide to Get Ready for Kindergarten. We have these spread around town. I left some here. And it explains what to do from birth through age five, to get ready for kindergarten in the Ferndale Schools. This one also happens to have a growth chart on it for parents to keep with information. So if anyone is interested in kindergarten at Ferndale Schools, getting ready to think about options and get information, we will have more in our upcoming e-news. We also have information on our enrollment page on our website. We are also starting to promote our district-wide all-city extravaganza. It is, this year, it's Saturday, January 28th, at Ferndale High School, from 12 to 4:00 PM. It's our biggest event of the year for the Ferndale Schools, and it's an opportunity for anyone in the community to come out and learn about the Ferndale Schools from preschool through high school. We especially want, you know, young families who haven't yet entered the Ferndale Schools, and people who are looking to find out more about our middle school, and what that means and what that entails. We have lots of student projects and concerts, and it's an opportunity for the community to really see what happens in the Ferndale Schools, what learning goes on. And, that's it.
Well, great. Thanks. Lots of great things going on over there. Give the marching band and our new volleyball star our congratulations, please.
You will?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Our next presentation this evening is from our Finance Department around the city's purchasing policy, and I'm going to ask our city manager to introduce this item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. One of the things that we want to be able to do is to ensure that we have consistency among our purchasing and our financial policies to make sure that staff is following the appropriate methods and the procedures that we do. And I had asked Jane Marie, I said, "Do we have a purchasing policy?" And she said, "As a matter of fact, I have been working on that." And she has graciously finished working through that. And we wanted to offer Council a time to be able to hear this policy, to talk about what, you know, where she pulled a lot of these things from the ordinance, from the charter, from memos, things of that nature, to bring it into one document. So I'm going to ask Jane Marie Hubings, who is our Finance Director, Treasurer, Assistant City Manager, to come forward and talk a little bit more in detail about the policy that you see before you. There's no voting on it tonight. It's a chance for you to hear it, to ask any questions, to offer anything, any concerns or things of that nature. And with that, I'm going to bring Jane Marie up forward to go through both the financial purchasing policy and financial policy.
Good evening.
Good to see you.
I'd like to start off with the purchasing policy. And per my cover memo, in a cost-cutting measure, about 30 years ago, the city of Ferndale eliminated their purchasing department and their staff. They had a purchasing agent at the time. So what has happened in the meantime is we've had a number of evolutions of procurement policies, purchasing policies, mostly based on charter, some on administrative directives, some on policies set by Council. But these documents, there's probably about 10 of them altogether. And what this purchasing policy attempts to do is collect that information and have it for a document that is mostly useful for external purposes, for vendors to understand what our policies are, so our staff knows what procedures they should be following when they need to purchase goods or services. So originally, this policy was based on the state purchasing policy. We adopted it in 2001. We made another change to it in 2005. But like I say, there's probably 10 different administrative directives, policies, procedures that have evolved through the years, and this attempts to bring it all into one concise, So I don't know if you want me to go in to the policy anymore. I think the important part is, again, mirroring the charter, indicating at what point a person should solicit bids for purchases, of course, $2,500 and over, for bids, or for purchases between $1,000 and $2,500, what procedures they should take, and for under $1,000, what procedures they should take. So it's, like I say, pretty clearly written, unlike previous policies, based on the state policy, which tended to be really wordy, very hard to follow. So we tried to make that considerably more concise. So, that being said, again, to mirror what the city manager said, we're hoping that the Council goes through it, that we get input from staff, from the public, if they see things that are of question to them, or things that they're interested in seeing and hearing. We're looking to bring this back to Council on December 12th for adoption.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think you need to go through it all. We have it, it's also online. But maybe you could highlight for us the significant changes, or revisions, or streamline?
The big change is that it attempts to compile all these various policies into one. Before, what we had was a procurement policy, which went through the bid process, but it didn't really tell you at what point you should bid. I believe when it was adopted, that was before we adjusted the limit to $2,500 to go out to bid, per the charter change. It didn't tell you that petty cash, and this policy was before we had credit card use. We are evolving into purchasing cards over the next six months. So it also provides the ability for employees to make purchases through purchasing cards. It tells you the uses of petty cash, as opposed to either a vendor, typical vendor payment off of an invoice. So, like I say, in very simple language, it attempts to put all of these policies together in one concise, easy-to-read document. And the intent is here, too, that we put this out on our website, so that vendors, staff members have easy access to it. And again, mostly it's for use by the vendors, so they understand what their responsibilities are in responding to our bids.
Good. Other questions of Council on the purchasing policy?
Just a comment?
Comments is hot. No, absolutely. That's fine.
I have questions on the Financial Policy Manual, but not on this. And just a comment, I work with, or I work at another public entity, I work at Wayne State, and I work with a number of outside firms in my capacity there. And it is, I know, a constant source of frustration to not always have clear communication with your vendors, to be able to point to a specific policy and say, "I know that this project is going to be bid," or "I don't know that this project is going to be bid." So my only comment, and this comes from my work at Wayne, is that there is, and it protects Wayne, but it makes the vendors and the staff people very frustrated, but just to put it out there. Wayne always reserves the right to bid anything at any level, even if it is below the threshold, for requiring a bid. Say, we require bids at $2,500, but we, as a city, reserve the right to bid something at a lower threshold should we so choose. It doesn't help with transparency necessarily to a vendor, but it may help with transparency to the community, should we want to go out for something else. It's only a comment that I offer, should you want to reserve that right for yourself and for the city and for our department heads, to say, "Actually, this is a brand-new process, or this is a brand-new something, and we've never done it before, and we would like to get bids, even though we only think it's going to cost $1,500." Wayne does invoke it fairly regularly.
I think that's a provision in the financial policy. Yeah, the city council has the wherewithal to decide to...
But I don't know that it would ever come to Council. That would be my caution, is that it would be a department head making a decision, per their purview in this manual, to not bid out something under a certain threshold. And I'm saying, just so long as I also have the opposite, which is, we wouldn't ever know it or see it if it was under $2,500.
And there is a provision in the policy that says, between $1,000 and $2,500, that you should solicit three bids. The $2,500 is really the advertised bid that we happen to use. Mitten for most of our advertisements, but, you know, depending on what we're advertising for, we may use other trade publications or such.
Yeah. It's a, yeah, I see both sides of it, and it makes me crazy at Wayne, but I know that it also protects Wayne, so.
Other comments or questions? All right.
Okay, then next, I have the Financial Policy Manual. This was adopted in May of 2009, as part of the 2010 budget process. And a couple of things have needed to be revised along the way. There are six major changes. There are some minor language changes in the documents, referring to title changes or name changes. There's reference to the Assessor Treasurer, a position we no longer have. So, you know, those would be under minor changes. Those are also redlined throughout the document. But the major changes, revisions to the Capital Improvement Program, based on the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, PA 33 of 2008, changes to fund balance classifications per GASB Statement 54, both of which were relatively recent changes. There's also itemization of the information included in the Long-Term Financial Plan. You saw those changes that a former city manager, Bruner, included in the Long-Term Financial Plan that was presented to Council as part of 2012 and '13's adopted process. But we've itemized those out because they're important changes that should be notated. Things on a five-year forecast of taxable value changes prospectively, major revenue items, capital improvement plan, also the five-year plan. So there are important things that should be included in a long-term plan, and they weren't itemized before. Creation of a water dispute board to review, investigate, and resolve customer complaints. This is really something that I've wanted to do for a very long time. And now, you know, I would like to make a commitment towards that board in a financial policy. And that's setting up an official board that customers can come to. We have a lot of issues on a daily basis, customers concerned about our billing policies, what their bill actually is, what their usage is compared to what it was before. And these are mainly funneled through the billing clerk, who is not necessarily the best person to answer. She can answer what appears on the screen, but as far as looking at trends or whatever, you know, that should really be something, and other cities have dispute boards. We have it in effect for taxes. You know, you go to the Board of Review, it's a major revenue item, a board decides what your fate will be. And I'm suggesting that the same thing would be appropriate in water, particularly given that our water rates are notable now. And it should be something that more than just clerk, a staff person resolves. Revisions to the credit card acceptance policy. This is really based on current acceptance standards of the credit cards. Whether we charge a convenience fee or not, that's really what that addresses. And then, an increase in the capital, asset capitalization policy. We had some pretty low thresholds, because some of the equipment that we capitalize in the motor pool is relatively low. The vehicles that we capitalize are relatively low. So this is making it more of a reasonable amount. $5,000 set is the bottom threshold. We occasionally do buy vehicles and equipments below that amount, used vehicles typically. Some of our equipment used in processes in the motor pool, but this sets it more of a reasonable threshold, so that we're not updating that quite as often as we need, as what's required under a $5,000 threshold. So those are the major changes. And again, that's to the 2009 policy. And, again, this is suggested that it be open for discussion, consideration, and placed on the agenda for December 12th for adoption. And this also, the intent is, if this is adopted, that it be placed on the website for staff, for external parties to see.
Are there any questions about the... Yes. For Tim Baker.
It is on, in the Financial Policy Manual, it's page 12, which is page 30 in the PDF, if people are looking at the online packet. The first, well, first the easier one, I guess. With the water dispute board, could you talk a little bit about who you would recommend to be on a water dispute board? I'm not assuming it would be residents, it would be governors, people with some expertise.
I would suggest that at minimum, it be one resident. I was thinking at least a party of three. It should be somebody from the DPW, who has experience in water, whether that is a supervisor or a leader, and myself, or a staff person.
Okay. And one resident, okay. I wasn't sure, maybe comparing it to the Board of Review, maybe. Just wonder. And then the other, actually, and I emailed the city manager about this earlier, it is, it's number one, under Utility Rates and Fees, and it talks about enterprise funds and charging indirect funds, and floating those up and down to fund each enterprise fund at a level that fully supports the total direct and indirect cost of the activity. And I wonder, when it mentions overhead charges, are salaries included in that? Are we basically locking ourselves into the same number of employees in each enterprise fund that we have right now?
Yes and no. It does include the employees, it includes all the costs to operate the enterprise system, but it does not lock you into that number of staff. And any year, Council can, you know, decide whether, what the appropriate level of staffing is in expenditures, but what it says, that if you say that is the appropriate level of expenditures, then you have to set a revenue that will pay for those expenditures. What we're seeing, you know, right now, and again, the city went through this in the mid-'70s, where we did not raise our rates for three years in a row, I believe. And then, what it caused is for us to have to raise the rates. We had some special projects, the one I can remember in the early '90s was out here on Nine Mile, where we had probably a million dollars' worth of work done in a year. Well, we didn't have sufficient reserves to do that type of work, so our rates spiked up 25%. And what you would like to do ideally with an enterprise system is have the users of the system pay for the charges within the same timeframe that they use them. So you want to set those rates, so that you cover your current year costs, put aside something for future capital needs, so that your rates are a gradual increase, rather than a flattening and then a spike.
The capital planning and the annual depreciation made sense, I just was wondering what was included in overhead. So we would go through a process similar to what we go through every budget year, and talk about enterprise funds, and decide on a level of service, and then you would give us a recommendation on what the rate would be to equal that level of service.
And I believe we saw that this year, in both sanitation and water sewer, where the rates requested were much higher, and we made staffing adjustments to keep the rates at a more reasonable level.
That's exactly where my question.
Additional questions?
Yeah, I had some questions about the capital improvement plan. It's great to see that this is getting integrated into the city's processes. I was just, my question is about timing, and when would it start? Because now, it's my understanding, the cities would develop their budgets, capital improvements, and they would go to the city manager, and they would be included for the year. The changes to the system, based off of state law through the Michigan Planning Act, now that the departments do the same estimating, but now it goes and gets to the department, the planning department, and goes to the Planning Commission for review. So how long do you estimate that process to be, and when do we start it?
One of the things Derek Delacourt has, is committed to, making sure that this process works. So we're working through that as we speak, and we'll have more on that. So we're trying to figure out how all of that kind of works with timing. But we're still kind of working through that. And the Planning Commission's aware of it and ready for it.
Right. And then, my other question is, how are you planning on integrating the capital improvement plan with the DDA? Although the pots of money may be separate, there could be crossover or overlap or integration points on some capital improvements. So how is that going to be included? I didn't see a mention of the DDA's capital improvement plan, because they do have one. How is that brought into this process?
Well, the special revenue funds, which the DDA is, is also required to submit a budget, so that's part of the budget development process, would be the CIP planning as well.
Okay. And we can work through that as well, to see that they're included in the whole, with the Planning Commission as well. Okay.
Additional comments or questions? All right, Jane Marie.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Look forward to voting on this, you said, the first meeting in December?
Yep.
Very good. All right, our next order of business, item five, is we have two public hearings this evening. The first public hearing is on our Community Development Black Grant Program for the year 2012. I will open the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address us on CDBG funding for 2012?
Hi.
Hi, good evening.
How's everybody doing?
Really well.
Good. My name is Kristi Pellock, I'm with Haven. And just first want to say thank you so much for the support that you've given to us in the past. We refunded $4,000 last year. I know that we have a request in front of you, and just hope that I can share some statistics with you today, that will be helpful and kind of illustrate to you, you know, that Haven is servicing all of Oakland County and Ferndale residents in particular. So last year, Haven serviced 127 Ferndale residents. 21 came seeking counseling services through our domestic violence and sexual assault counseling programs. 44 turned to Haven for support from our court advocacy team, and they go with victims to their court appointments, if they need any sort of special outreach or counseling. Eight visited our PPO office, and we're guided through that process, and that can be really kind of cumbersome, so we were able to guide them through that. Seven utilized our START program, where sexual assault survivors can receive both emotional support by the advocate and a therapeutic medical care in a safe environment. And then, lastly, this is a number that we kind of know, but we don't, because not everybody that calls our crisis line tells us what city they're from. But 48 called our crisis and support line, and these people are there 25 hours a day, 365 a year, you know, offering, you know, that year to folks that need support, and also if they need other services, referrals, or whatnot. So, again, we just thank you, and hope that as your finalizing your budgets, that you remember us and the good work that we do. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
Other comments on our CDBG program for 2012? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing portion of this, and we will introduce this item. And Derek, I see you here. You want to give a brief background on how we're allocating CDBG dollars in 2012?
Absolutely, Mayor. The program year 2012, at this point, we're being instructed by the county to budget on a number of $75,350, which is consistent with what was actually provided in program year 2011. They have advised us that they foresee another cut coming, somewhere between 5 and 7%. So I'm guessing the actual will be a little bit less than this. The distribution of activities, the only major change, or two major changes this year, is the first is, you are no longer to have an individual administrative line item that has to be included into each project. Last year, that was a $2,000 line item, and we'll have to get reimbursed through individual projects now, as opposed to doing that all at one time. That money was moved into code enforcement, because that's where the brunt of the cut came last year, when the money was severely reduced. The other major change is a limitation on public service projects, no more of a... The other major change is a limitation on public service projects to no more of a total of 15% of your total allocation. So last year, we had yard services through Olsha and Haven at $9,000 and $4,000 individually. With this year's allocation, that would exceed the 15% total allotment for public service items. So what we did is, we just took $1,000 off of each and moved those into code enforcement as well. Again, for the sheer reason that that's where our major cut came last year, and that seemed the most logical place to put them, at least from a staff perspective, without hearing any input from council. So your allocations of the $75,350 amount to $58,850 for code enforcement, $8,000 for public service activity, which is basically the senior yard services and snow removal through Olsha, $3,000 for Haven, and then $5,500 for minor home repair, which we are, because we have a code enforcement program, required to have a minor home repair program as well. So that is percentage-wise and number-wise, consistent with how the city has allocated its money in the past. And at this point, hearing no major concerns from council, how staff would recommend moving forward.
Okay, don't go anywhere in case there are questions from council. Are there questions or comments from council on this item?
Just, no, you go first. Just a couple of questions. Code enforcement, that $58,000, that's to cover two part-timers, right?
It covers, we have three people that that, actually four, that that money can be used to reimburse us for salary. One is a clerical person who charges for probably 35, 40 hours a month. And then our two code enforcement officers and our rental inspector as well can charge a portion of their time to that, to that amount.
But we do have two ordinance officers that are 40 hours a week, for 48 weeks a year.
And when we say code enforcement, it's probably, it's probably best to clarify. We include rental inspection as that as well.
All right. And then my other question is more of federal policy that trickles down to us, right? The CBDG funds have been on the chopping block again at the federal level, and I think that's why the county has projected a decrease in fund. That's my understanding. So do you know when we'll find out whether or not the federal, what the monies will mean in terms of impacting the monies to this fund for us?
Well, the big, the big cut, my understanding, and it did happen, and hopefully it won't be so large again. Last year, you budgeted $91,000 plus for CVBG, and somewhere between the public hearing and the application, and the actual came back in at the $75,000 level. So I think that's somewhere 15% plus cut in the money. We're being advised right now to plan with this, but that by the time the actual applications come out in hopefully fall of next year, or spring of next year, the applications, that it's, they're anticipating 5% to 7% more. So this number, we'll probably have less than the $75,000 to actually work with in program year 12. I would guess somewhere closer to $68,000.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no. No, I've just decided that since I'm leaving, I better start saying things that I keep meaning to say, and I haven't said. So here's number two for the night, random catch. Okay, here we go. The, when we talk about the minor home repair and the minor home improvement fund, as well as the lawn mowing assistance fund, those are things that go really quickly. I mean, $5,500 doesn't go very far in a community that has, you know, people that are struggling like we do. And it's something that I brought up a few years ago and was discouraged from pursuing, but you know what, we've got new staff now. So I would, I would just love it if we, as a community, could think about some type of revolving loan fund. I think that we have
I agree.
A pretty urgent need in our community to be able to do some improvements. People can't move, they can't sell their houses, they want to put money back into their homes. They're a pain to administer, and I completely understand that, but it's, it's something that's been important to me and to my family, to be able to access at a county level. And I think that being able to access it at a, at a city level might help even more people rebuild and be able to fix some of their code violations. And that's it. Thanks for catching.
Additional comments or questions? I would just say I'm happy to see the folks from Haven here. Love your program, love your work. As a commissioner, we, I worked with Dave Woodward to fight to get county funds for Haven. I'm stunned and disappointed to see the number of 127 Ferndale residents that needed to avail themselves of your service last year, but I'm glad you were there for them, and I'm glad we were able to give you at least, you see the budget challenges we're in, but at least something. So thanks for being here, yeah. All right. If there are no further questions, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
I don't believe we have a motion on the table.
Oh, that would be, correct, a motion would be in order first.
I would move that we adopt the motion as proposed.
Thank you. Move by Galloway, supported by Piana. Any additional comments before we vote? Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers Galloway.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Baker. Yes. Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you, that is adopted. Our next public hearing this evening is a public hearing on a liquor license, the transfer of ownership of a 2011 Class C licensed business located at 22726, 22728 Woodward in Ferndale, from Club Bart Inc. to Farrah Productions LLC, and to add a new dance entertainment purpose. At this time, I would open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address us on this liquor license Seeing none, I will close the public hearing portion and request a city manager. Would you introduce this item, or would this be a?
Clerk.
Madam Clerk.
Basically, it's a straightforward transfer between Club Bart, which of course is gone, and Farrah Productions. Police Department has investigated and recommends approval. It just needs council seal in order to go to the MLCC.
Does council have any questions or comments on this item?
It's been a little while since we approved, I think this is a full license rate, not a county or anything like that. What is the addition of that dance entertainment permit? What does that allow them to do? Do, you know, at our location, if Bart couldn't do? What is the reference to top of that?
Yeah, I thought you said.
Topless activity permits.
That's another special permit type, it's not the one that's being requested, I know that much, but where's the chief?
Chief, you want to take this one?
I think it's you, sir.
It's a separate permit. We're not giving those out, I know.
That's beautiful.
But the dance permit?
With the dance permit, what does that allow them to do that they couldn't do at Club Bart's, literally a dance floor?
Correct, it'll be similar to what they would have at Oberon, now I'm losing, lost
it. The ones that we allow dancing at, at Boogie Fever, something like that, you have a dance floor, and they're allowed, it has to be, there's a size requirement for the number of people inside, so there's a lot of hoops for them to jump through, to, through the LCC. They have to meet the LCC requirements, which are the same ones that we've adopted, and it's through the fire department and that type of thing. There's a floor space that they have to have a certain size that they can do, which will affect the number of occupants that they can have in the building.
And this is not true.
So their occupancy is based on not only floor space, but they have to subtract, I think you subtract the floor space that's dedicated to dancing from the occupancy. So they keep it as reasonable as they want, because the more dance floor space that you have, the less they'll have occupancy for the bar itself. And that'll all go through LCC, and then Detective Thol will look at it all over before he'll see it again. And he'll have our stamp on it of approval before, it's a final approval request.
So will the council have an opportunity to see this again for one final approval?
Wait, what?
This would be, this is the local legislative body's input as to whether or not it wishes to approve a dance entertainment permit.
But this is a transfer, this is not anything that they couldn't put on.
It's a transfer and a new permit.
So I guess what I'm struggling with in my head, and that's a small location.
It is.
It's Boogie Fever, so, and they are doing food there as well, right? It's not just a bar?
I'm still by the restaurant.
A bar restaurant?
Correct.
I don't know if anyone's familiar with the plans of this new place, but I'm literally trying to envision how a dance floor would fit into such a small space that's also doing restaurant. And I see Christina shuttling over, she may have.
She knows more. I know a little bit more.
Yeah.
You know, I've met with the owners, but basically their plan is to do an American-style bistro with a little bit of a European flair. They do plan to have entertainment. So I think in most respects, probably what they're looking at doing is, when there's probably some form of musical entertainment, if they want to be able to have some dedicated space for some dancing. Obviously, the space is very small, but their focus is on food, so it's not going to be the emphasis of their business. I think one of the things that maybe if you did a comparable in terms of, the scope and size of the space isn't comparable, but Rosie O'Grady's has a small little dance area that they utilize at different times. I mean, they even have like little kids' performances, you know, like a musician and kids are dancing in that space. And it's small, because their focus primarily is on food. So, but, other than that, they are planning on doing some major renovations to the building, really remodeling the inside and the exterior, and they have already been in with the city's appearance review committee, and moving forward with some of their renovations that they need to get done.
Derek, I see you jumped up, do you have anything to add to this, or?
Just basically, we've met with the owners on several occasions, it is a restaurant first, they have no intention of being a dance club or anything like that. I think what Christina related is very accurate. I don't even think on their floor plans, they have a permanent location for any type of dance. I think it's more the option to do so with musical entertainment.
Spun hay is dancing?
Yeah, yeah. Random, I guess. Yeah, their intent is certainly to be a restaurant, not a club.
What is the city's recourse, should they suddenly become more dance than food? Of course, they'd be in violation of this permit, right? Because they would.
There's limitations.
There's limitations, and the limitations of the specifications of this permit.
Under the LCC.
Right.
Be stated first?
In every year, you're renewing the license. So you could review it at that time.
All right. Appreciate it. Any other discussions or comments on this item?
I would move that we approve the transfer of ownership of 2011 Class C licensed business located at 22726, 22728 Woodward Avenue, Ferndale, Oakland County, from Club Bart Inc. to Farrah Productions LLC, and add new dance entertainment purposes.
Support.
Moved by Galloway, supported by Baker. Any further comments or questions? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmembers Piana.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Galloway.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted, thanks. Our next item of business is call to audience. As I think folks know, call to audience is a half hour now, and more time needed at the end of the meeting. Each member of the audience has three minutes to address us on any topic that they like that's not on the agenda, we'll allow you to talk to that item at the appropriate time. Please state your name and address for the clerk, or write it on the sheet in the back. Councilman-elect.
Good evening. Yeah, my name is Dan Martin, I'm at 1447 West Hazelhurst, and I just want to take the opportunity for, to thank the voters for coming out this past Tuesday. It seems like a month ago now, to be honest with you, but it was just Tuesday, and I am very appreciative and grateful for the trust they've, they've put in me, and I look forward to working with council. I also want to congratulate Mayor Coulter for his election, and Councilman Lennon for his reelection. And I want to thank Sherri Wells, who ran a very honorable campaign, and I really appreciate all the hard work she put into it, and I think it enhanced our discussion. And when you look at how rough some of the other elections have been locally, I think we did the residents of Ferndale proud in keeping it civil and keeping it on topic. So I think that was great. And of course, I want to recognize Ray Willis for running. Anytime he puts your name out there for something like this, it, you know, it's putting yourself out there, so, and he certainly participated, and I'm appreciative of his presence in the election as well, so, thank you.
Thanks, Dan, appreciate it. Christina?
Dancing her way to the microphone. I know, exactly, we're tag teaming tonight, too. So Christina Shepherd-Desius and Chris Hughes with the Ferndale DDA. This isn't our normal presentation night, but we have a lot of stuff going on, especially this week and coming up, so we wanted to run through a few things quickly. First off, on Thursday, we have a couple of things. We have our Park Mobile launch, which is our pay-by-phone parking system that the city has adopted and put in place. It's only in soft launch form, it's out there, it's operating, but we're going to have a special ribbon-cutting ceremony at 4:00 p.m. out in front of Elegance by Design, which is at 231 West Nine Mile. That launch will be from 4:00 to 4:30, and then we'll have a little bit of welcoming reception afterwards, where people will be able to actually see a demonstration of it if they would like to register. We will also be announcing the winner of the free iPad, so come out, find out if you won. As well, then.
People still enter?
I'm sorry.
People still enter?
Yes, you can still enter until Thursday, so.
Tell them how.
And just, well, actually, just go and register for Park Mobile online, so, and, I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead, thank you.
Send an email to, it'll be on our Facebook page tomorrow.
It's easier. It's much easier.
You remember where you have to send the email to, but.
To, you put the subject as Ferndale Raffle, and.
Right.
And if you sign up now and you come to the launch on Thursday, you can use your phone to park.
Yes.
So we highly recommend it.
The other thing that evening is our first-ever Light the Town event, and this is a great new event to really kick off the holidays in downtown Ferndale, and I'm going to just let Chris say a few words about that.
We're very excited, we have thousands of new sparkly Christmas lights, holiday lights out there, excuse me, to light up the street. It was a, this was an effort that was put together by our downtown Ferndale merchants, they wanted to get more lights out there, and they really worked hard, and we're very thrilled to have been able to help them accomplish that goal. At 8:00, we're going to have the music messengers in town, and we are going to do a stroll around town to see what everybody's done to decorate and get ready for the holiday. And if you're in town, there's lots of stuff happening all over. Open House at Blooms, Sing Along with the Beatles at AJ's, Fernetta Davis is going to be performing at Elegance by Design. So it's, there's stuff happening all over town that night, come on down, bring your friends, it's a great night to be in downtown Ferndale, so come on down.
And then, the following week, on Monday, November 21st, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m., we're hosting our second of our community forums. It will be at the Woodward Avenue Candy Shop, which is on Woodward, and we'll be focusing on the north end of Woodward, and really looking at street skate development, as well as building development within that area. We want to find out both resident and business needs for Woodward Avenue. How do you really interface with Woodward Avenue and the businesses that are along there? So we want your input. This is one session that will be focusing on North Woodward, and then on December 5th, we will then do another section for South Woodward, and that will be at the St. James Community Center. That is December 5th, and 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. as well. Final note is that I wanted to make sure that council was up to date on what the DDA, the DPW, and the police department have been working on with TIA. We will be coming to council at the next November meeting to do a presentation on the study that TIA has conducted, which is the Traffic Improvement Association. They have been looking at the West Nine Mile corridor, as well as Allen between Troy and Nine Mile. But I did want to alert both you, as well as residents, that we are going to be doing a temporary review, a narrowing of Allen, to see the traffic implications of narrowing Allen between Troy and Nine Mile. And one of the reasons for looking at that is for pedestrian purposes, in looking at extending the sidewalk for people on the east side of Allen, it's hard without a map here. But right now, that sidewalk is only four feet wide, it's very narrow, the ramping from the south side of Allen to the north side is very trepidatious for both handicap accessibility, as well as, you know, moms with baby strollers, and, you know, families with dogs, and anything, you know, if you have more than two people, you're pretty tight on that sidewalk. And as well as looking at the three-way stop that is being proposed for that intersection at Troy and Allen. So this will allow us for one week period to kind of review and see. So, this will allow us for one-week period to kind of review and see how this impacts all traffic flow, because there is some trepidation at this point on TIA's part. The analysis that they have done basically states that, yes, you can do it. However, based on visual cues, they're finding that there are some impacts that would happen with traffic flow. But we do want them to look at not only traffic flow, but also pedestrian safety within that area as well. So, this will, I have to actually propose some dates to the chief, and he will put together the traffic control order. But we're looking at a one-week period to review that. We do want it to go over a weekend, so we can really see the impact, because that's when we're the busiest, obviously. So, probably by the end of the week, you will see some construction barrels up that will be simulating a reduced road lane at that area, so.
And that is it? More than I, more time than I anticipated. I'm sorry. That's okay. Thank you. But just to reiterate for the residents, so sometime in the next week, we're going to literally block off one lane of Allen between Troy and Nine Mile as an experiment, basically, a demonstration to see how the flow works and to allow us to see if that will accommodate greater safety on the sidewalk. So, please bear with us for one week, and if you hate it, let us know that. If you like it, let us know that. We're interested in your feedback on how that goes, but we're going to stick with it for seven days and see what happens.
I think it's a low-cost option to see how a choice will affect patterns, so, thanks.
We're still in Call to Audience, so additional members of the audience would like to address council this evening. Sherri Wells.
Sherri Wells, 315 West Troy. When, a lot of people do watch us on cable. It is just amazing how many. When I was out walking on the east side, I heard a lot of comments about how they feel neglected, but they neglected to vote in the kind of numbers that precincts on the west side do, so I challenged them to do much better in two years. There are other ways of people to be involved between now and then. The boards and commissions are populated again in January as a regular matter when different terms drop off. A number of years ago, two of us put together information about each one of the boards and commissions and made it public, and we had 52 people apply that January, and I'd like to see that again, too. The Alton Culture Commission, for one, needs more people, and they don't need just the creative people. They have those. They need people who are event planners, public relations, marketing, people who would like to do that for those that can be creative. So, they need that balance on that committee. Also, the other part is Rotary. I'm very proud to say that Rotary again honored veterans. What we've started is a tradition of honoring three veterans. We make sure that one is always through the Vietnam era. This year, we honored with the Quilts of Valor. These are homemade lap quilts that are made by, it's now a national organization of women who make these quilts. George Williams, World War II, Robert Taylor, the Korean War. He's the Ferndale Glass Company. And Nicholas Luxon of the Luxon Family fame for the Vietnam War. And Mr. Taylor had brought a friend of his, somebody he'd gone into service with, had known at the time, they were both gone into service for the Korean War, and had been out of touch for a while and are in touch again. And this man came with him, and these wonderful women took one of their quilts that they had on display and gave it to this man, too. So, we honored four in effect. So, I'm really thrilled that this is one of the wonderful customs that Rotary is now doing. One of the discussions that was made is having a veterans' commission like some other cities do, and I'm going to look in into that some more. That might be an effort that Rotary might want to propose to council. That evening, April, our city manager, April McGrath, was there, and Dan Martin were there to help us honor these people. Put on your calendars, December 10, when the DDA announces its ICE Fest, don't forget to work up an appetite for the Rotary Pancake Breakfast. That's how we give the achievement awards to our seniors.
Thank you.
High school seniors.
Thank you. Additional members of the audience? Good evening, Dave.
Well, speaking of the east side and people actively participating...
Give us your name, just...
Oh, I'm sorry. Dave Cotrell from 1610 Ball Field.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay. Speaking of the east side and people actively participating, I did attend the Watch Dogs Saturday, November 6th forum. I'd also attended the city council campaign forums held by League of Women's Voters, Citizens for Fair Ferndale, and the Chamber of Commerce. I was impressed with the Ferndale Watch Dogs forum, because it became really an informal discussion between friends about what is best for the city. Sean House encouraged everyone attending to present their question or comments. One person remarked that the campaign's been very civil and honest this time around. It was also mentioned that because the modern stipends paid to the mayor and city council that more people can afford to run for office, that gets more participation. They're now somewhat compensated for their time, and their time away from the personal lies. The idea of how to improve the bi-local resolution was discussed. I'd like the system to be tweaked to avoid maybe price advantages to local vendor, undo pricing advantages to a local vendor, and to prevent another form of spoil systems from emerging. They can, like, the city of Detroit is kind of famous or infamous for all the abuses. I just want to make sure that possibility does not exist. And possibly making our local ordinance more like the county's was discussed. So, you know, a good model, let's take a look at it. And I'm very glad that the finance department is presenting their draft of the purchasing policy. That's a really good thing. I had questioned the city clerk's office and found out there was like, well, the, like, 2002 procedures and then the 2005 resolution, and then there's some other policies somewhere around, and nobody could really tell me what they were. So, I'm glad, really glad they put it all together, and I can read it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Seeing no one else, we'll move on to our next item of business, which is the Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda items are things that we typically consider routine business by the city, and we enact in one motion unless they are removed from the consent agenda. And so, I would entertain a motion to, well, let's see, what do I want to do? Are there anything that should be removed, that council would like to see removed from the consent agenda this evening? And I'm going to start by saying I would like to remove Item F, 7F, to the regular Any other items council would like to remove? If not, I should read the consent agenda, shouldn't I, Madam Clerk? Thank you. You'd think after eight months, I'd have this down just a little bit better. A would be the approval of minutes of the regular meeting held October 24th, 2011. B is the approval to adopt a condolence resolution for the family of Norman Van Sparantak. C is the approval to adopt resolution opposing House Bill 5039. D is approval to adopt a resolution of support for the Community Access Preservation Act. E is the approval for the Police Department to promote a sergeant to lieutenant and hire a dispatcher. F has been removed to the regular agenda. G, approval of the special event permit for the barbecue rib burnout number five on Saturday, February 4th, 2012, from 12:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. in the west half of the municipal parking lot west of the Ferndale Public Library, contingent upon the stipulations noted in the city event director's memo. Item H, approval of the listed accounts to be charged as a lien against their respective properties and to be collected as special assessments with the December 1st, 2011 tax roll. I, approval of the amended resolutions granting IFEC certificates to Garden Fresh for a 12-year tax abatement in the amount of $11,774,000 at 1505 Bonner, and a 12-year tax abatement in the amount of $1,600,000 at 1220 East Nine Mile, and authorization for the mayor and city clerk to sign. J, approval of the bills and payroll submitted by the city manager, subject to review of the council finance committee. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Salute.
And that's with the exception of F?
With the exception of F.
Thank you. With the exception of F, isn't frank.
Support.
Moved by Baker, supported by Galloway. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmembers Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Which brings us to our regular agenda. Item A, consideration of custodial maintenance contract with American Cleaning. City manager, do you want to introduce that item? The maintenance contract with American Cleaning.
I have Byron here from DPW, who is interested in extending the American Cleaning contract for another, another go-around. They happened in 2008 for three years, and part of our purchasing policy is to allow to do another, another three-year stint with the company, and they've actually asked, they're actually lowering our price, if I'm not mistaken, correct Byron? So, I don't know if you want to come and talk about it at all, a little bit. You take the, you kind of have to take a look at the concept on whether or not you would want to extend somebody's contract, but they're a good company, as well as they've actually lowered the cost. So, over a five- to six-year span, we've actually lowered from the original cost. So, I'm going to have him talk a little bit about that.
We're asking council, we've negotiated with America Cleaning for a four-year extension with no price increase. In addition to that, they would purchase the custodial supplies, which on average, currently the city is providing that, and it's about $2,000 a year. So, they're basically decreasing their price by $2,000, at least for the next four years. They have been, they were the low bidder in 2008. There were seven proposal bidder bids. They were, the second highest bid was about $14,000 more than they were, and offered 20% fewer hours of service. So, they did pretty well in the bid back in 2008. They are a mom-and-pop operation. Their staff, in my experience, running the custodial contract for 25 years, it's a lot of turnover. We always find that the smaller firms tend to do a better job, and they have employees who stay with them, and this is a mom-and-pop operation. They, I will say unequivocally that they have been the best contractor in the last 25 years that I've had to deal with in custodial. As anybody who's ever dealt with custodial, you have your good days and you have your bad days. And they've been pretty consistent, and whenever we've had a situation where we needed some attention, they have always responded. So, in short, they are a good company, and there's no price increase for four years, and they're reducing at least $2,000 a year for custodial. And we thought that at least we should bring it to council's opportunity for council to review this.
And to be clear, one of the reasons I think we're doing this is, in the normal course of events, after a three-year, we would rebid this, per our policies. However, we also leave ourselves the opportunity to not do so for a period of time, not forever, but eventually...
I think you can go three times in a row, like, three altogether before you have to, but...
So, you, we can decide as a council that we are going to not rebid it because of the experience that we've had, the price that they're willing to offer, that it's in our best interest financially, in our taxpayers' best interest to renew the current contract. So, that's why it's here.
And I will offer, too, as well, this is anecdotal, anipsoleani as well. This is, this price is very much in line with the quotes that we would often get. And again, it's very hard to find a very good cleaning company, so it's not too far off the mark as well either, so.
Okay. Any comments or discussion of council on this item?
I guess mine are more of just comments. I, in this day and age, I don't know how you price guarantee for four years and lower costs, so provide the same level of service. So, I, you know, be incumbent upon Byron and city manager to make sure that we don't have a decrease in service, even though there's a significant decrease in price.
Correct.
All right. A motion would be in order, then.
I move to approve the custodial maintenance contract by in-between American Cleaning at 52844 Karen Drive, Mccone Township, at $56,652 per year through December 31st, 2015, and to charge the expense as follows: $39,420 to DPW General Building Ground Maintenance Accounts, and $17,232 to the Vehicle Equipment Fund. Period. Yes. I'm not, I'm not going to say the account number.
Is there support? Support. Moved by Piana, supported by Baker. Any additional comments or questions of council?
The only time that I can recall that I've seen this done was with our cement contractor, which after, we then had some complaints, we went back and we rebid and we changed contractors. So, I'm confident that should there be any complaints, the DPW would address it, just as they did with our cement contractor.
That would be a correct decision.
City manager agreed.
Yes.
All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That contract is approved. The next item would be formerly 7F of the consent agenda, which I ask to have approved, removed, excuse me, approval of the special event permit for the 2011 Holiday ICE and Winter Fest Market on December 9th, 10th, and 11th of this year, on East Nine Mile Road between Woodward and Bermuda, and December 10th on Plantavon between West Nine Mile and Withington Parking Lot, contingent upon the stipulations noted in the city events director memo. And I pull this because Chris Hughes has some additional work on this for us, correct?
Correct. Which may be contingent upon other things. So, we would like to add to our request to close the alley between, that is just west of the Rust Belt Market for the day, December 10th, from 10 till 6, to accommodate a vendor. I did call the fire chief, he had no issues with it, but the police are reviewing it to find out how we're going to move vendors in and out, and so I may have been premature in pulling it off the consent agenda, but I would rather come here now and say, maybe in a week, we're going to, the next meeting, we're saying, okay, we really want to now close that alley. It's going to depend on what we can work out. Rust Belt does open on Friday nights during this period, so I'm thinking their unloading may be primarily over by then, and we won't have that congestion. And of course, we don't want to muck anything up. We'd rather, we want to enhance the event, so that was the point of pulling it off the consent agenda, because we had not originally asked for that.
But we, so if I understand you correctly, although the fire chief is okay, the police chief still needs to review that request, and...
They were not able to get, oh, he can speak.
Like Chris called us earlier today, Your Honor, and we, the traffic officers, they're trying to get a hold of the Rust Belt folks, and if that messes up where they drop off, they have trailers and things like that. If we block off that alleyway, once you come in from the Withington lot side, you wouldn't be able to be got, or it would be very difficult to get out. So, we want to make sure that we can, that everybody's in harmony with everybody before we give it a go-ahead. We just haven't been able to get a hold of the Rust Belt folks today, but we're working on it. And we've been speaking, we'll work it out one way or the other.
So, to the city attorney, I guess, can we pass this contingent upon approval of the...
That would be appropriate, Your Honor.
Add her request for the closure of the alley contingent upon the...
On the police chief's approval of the plan.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. So, we'll do that tonight, so you don't have to come back and do this again next time.
Thank you. And everybody come out for it, because it's going to be amazing.
Sounds like it. A motion would be in order if anyone caught all of that.
May I ask a question before I make the motion?
Oh, of course.
For the city clerk, do you need me to read each of the bullet points?
No. I think the way, actually, Mr. Larry put this together, and he does a wonderful job at it, and I believe you can just say contingents on...
Could I say contingent upon the points enumerated in the motion, or enumerated in the memo?
From Special Events Director Larry.
Plus the...
Plus the addition of the alley to the west of...
The Rust Belt Market on December 10th.
On December 10th from 6...
All right. I'll try and have you. I would move to approve the special event permit for the 2011 Holiday ICE and Winter Fest Market on December 9th, 10th, and 11th, 2011, as detailed in the Special Event Director's summary, and with the contingency items enumerated in his memo, in addition to adding the new request contingent on the police, the police chief's approval to close the alley to the west of the Rust Belt Market on December 10th.
Very good. Is there support?
Support? That's a long list.
Moved by Baker, supported by Piana. Is there any further discussion or questions on that item? Then, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Then Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. Uh, next order of business would be call to council, um, police chief, I'll give you, you've been up a couple of times already, I'll give you yet another opportunity to address it. Thank you, sir, appreciate it very much, thank you. Byron, anything?
Yes, I have. Leaf collection.
Yes.
We're entering the crunch time for leaves now and, um, depending on how well people put them out and, um, uh, we don't want to get behind. We're on schedule as it is, but the weather can change. Uh, November 28th is the last date you can put them out and we'll pick them up.
Good to know.
So, we're not, we're not asking people to, you know, they have till November 28th and by then, we should be able to at least, uh, pick them up thereafter. Um, after the 28th, uh, you can put it out with your regular rubbish collection, in your craft bags, those paper bags that you get at the hardware store, or in your, um, container that have your yardway sticker, um, and that'll be good through December 19th. Um, we're having a problem, as we always do, with parked cars. We can't collect the leaves if the cars are parked on top of them. And I know parking on streets is, we don't have a lot of driveways, um, and so forth, and there's a lot of cars out there, but it, it does slow us down. Um, also debris in the piles, no, no sledgehammers, no, uh, other things that bust up propellers of the vacuums, because we have four trucks, you get, you knock one truck out, then you're, you're 25% lost your resources that you have. We actually, actually had somebody put a ball peen hammer in a leaf pile and it went through and tore the inside of the, um, the vacuum.
Oh, my God.
As we had today with the rain, you have people rake leaves all the way out to the, cover the drainage structures and just be careful not to do that, uh, because then we end up having flooded streets and then it backs the water up and then it makes the leaves that much more harder to collect. Um, that's about it, but the big thing is to park cars. Please do not, do not park. Oh, the other thing is, uh, this time of year, we're, we're basically running it every other week. Uh, so, if we, for example, collect on the west side this whole week, well, the following week, we're on the east side, and then we won't get back to the west side. Um, it's just that much more difficult, we have that much more leaves out. So, any questions? Thank you.
Thanks Byron, appreciate it. Fire Chief Sullivan, anything this evening?
Yes, Your Honor, it's a perfect segue. Uh, parking on the leaves is a bad idea, not just for operation of the DPS. It will catch your car on fire due to catalytic converters and that. Apparently, we had a police car parked in leaves and it packed them up under there. When a different police officer was driving out to pick someone up, the car caught on fire. Luckily, it was all put out, no damage, but that's one of the things parking on leave does, is it jams underneath the vehicle. So, uh, parking on them just doesn't get in the way of the leaf vacuum, it, it is a very hazardous thing to do.
Thank you for the reminder, or the education. Uh, Derek Delacorte, anything else this evening? All right, thank you.
You didn't catch anything on fire, or?
Jill, anything from the recreation department this evening? All right. Uh, April McGrath, anything additional from-
I do, I just want to remind people to, um, get your note where you vote. Again, we started that campaign la, that campaign last week. Again, it's intended for people to know where they need to go to get information when there's an emergency. So, not only is it going, if you, if all technology is lost, of going to voting precincts, but it's also to know where you go online for information when we do have an emergency. So, it's a little bit of both, and I just want to thank Chris Hughes, who did a wonderful job with our flyers and, um, kind of, we entitled this whole thing a recap, which is a resident emergency communication action plan. And this will continually be modified and updated as we move forward with how we communicate with residents, but it is important to know your surroundings and know where you need to go when, um, when all technology is lost and if there's any major, um, impact or adverse, um, happenings to our residents, that they know that if they don't have, even for those that don't have access to computers, that if they needed to, in case of an emergency, they could walk over to their closest voting precinct and get in, up-to-date information. So, we'll continue to promote this program, um, as much as possible, just to get into people's minds of, you know, where, again, where you go when you need, uh, when you need information. And it's not only for people who, if we lose technology, but for those folks who actually don't have technology in their homes, they don't have computers and things of that nature. So, make sure you're familiar with it, as well as we did update our website, uh, only with that information, but, um, Chief Sullivan was gracious enough to give us a ton of information on preparing your families for emergencies, what you need to do to make sure that you communicate with your own families, uh, generator safety, um, making sure that, you know, it's, but in particular, winter issues and things of that nature. So, please familiar, uh, make yourself familiar with that part of the website. There's a lot of great information, um, that has been provided for families who want to make sure that they have all their bases covered. So, again, thank you very much for everybody who supported this program and we'll continue to educate our residents on where to go, um, to get your note where you vote. Also, wanted to let council know that, uh, in December, I'll be bringing the second step in the economic vitality incentive program, which is, uh, we need to provide the state with information on what we have done, uh, to consolidate services or share services, as well as provide them with information of what we're doing in the future. So, we'll have a ton of information for you on that, um, in the December meeting, so that I can forward that on to the state. So, we continue to move forward to make sure we get, uh, have the most access to our state share revenue that we can, and I'll be, again, bringing that in December.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, Dan, Chris, our city attorney, anything this evening?
Uh, just since, uh, council's next meeting's on the 28th, 28th, I'd like to wish, uh, council and everybody in the community a happy, happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Dan, appreciate it. Uh, Councilwoman Baker?
To the city clerk?
Oops, see, I learned my script. Sherilyn, anything this evening? How did the election go from your end?
This was one of the smoothest elections we've had, and I want to add my commendations to the candidates who ran very clean cooperative, um, campaigns. You were a real pleasure to work with and you made things very easy on my office, and that's very much appreciated, appreciated. Um, I also want to thank my staff, all of our election workers, um, city staff who pitched in, who loaned me people and equipment and gave their time. Um, it really is a cooperative effort and everyone's participation's very much valued. Thank you.
Thank you. Great, great job as always. Uh, now, Councilwoman Baker.
I thought I was safe, I was trying to find an event date, my computer. The, uh, first, uh, congratulations to the winners and, and really to all the candidates. Um, elections are, are fun. I don't know, maybe that's just me, but I think elections are fun. Um, so, there will be, uh, you know, some, some, some changes and some new faces, um, not only on the, on the council, um, but we had a library board election as well, and although, um, the candidates were, were unopposed, several of those people are new to the, newer to the library board. So, there's been a lot of change on, on that board as well. Um, people are, are asking me what I'm going to do with all of my free time and, um, I don't, I won't have any, because I'll be doing things like this. Um, I'm on the Ferndale Education Foundation Board, and as Jessica Stillger mentioned, we have an event coming up this Friday, November the 18th, at 7 o'clock, uh, going until 10 o'clock or probably later, if there's this much wine involved, at The Loving Touch. It is, um, a fundraiser for the Ferndale Education Foundation. We make grants to directly support, um, our students in the Ferndale Public Schools. There's a wine tasting, and not only a wine tasting, but a wine ordering party. So, um, even if you can't go, you can still order wine for the holidays at a significant discount, uh, through the folks at The Loving Touch. There is information on Facebook, um, if you search Ferndale Education Foundation, the wine tasting will come up, that's where I just found it. Again, it's Friday, November 18th, 7 o'clock, Loving Touch, Ferndale Education Foundation. Wine tasting, it's $20 at the door. I don't know the wine prices, I imagine they vary, uh, based on what you're ordering. And there is contact information on this Facebook page, um, that will give you, uh, phone numbers and email addresses for ordering wine, even if you can't attend. So, even if you can't go, you can still support the FEF. It was a little convoluted, but that's it for the evening.
Thank you. Councilwoman Piana?
I have very few comments tonight, um, other than, I have, I never worry about our elections, because, uh, you manage them so well, um, with everybody, um, at the city. So, just thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to everybody who ran for city council, and we have a shift in leadership up here, and, um, Dan, I welcome you, uh, at the table, and I look forward with, uh, working with Mike Lennon, um, and over the next year.
Councilman Galloway?
Just congratulations, Mayor, another, uh, term up here, look forward to working with you and welcoming Dan up to the table. It's going to be exciting times.
All right, uh, Mayor Coulter, oh, that's me. Um, I want to thank the residents of Ferndale for your support last Tuesday, it is very humbling, and, uh, it's a responsibility that I look forward to for the next two years, so thank you very much. I want to congratulate Dan, uh, we look, as, as people have said, we look forward to working with you up here, working with you in a new capacity. We've worked with you on a number of things already. Mike isn't here, I congratulate him, and, and I want to echo what, what Dan said. I want to, I want to congratulate Sherry and Ray Willis for the campaigns that you ran that were hard-fought, uh, but well-fought and, and with integrity. And so, uh, I think the residents of Ferndale were the, were the beneficiaries of, of your effort and all of our efforts. So, another good campaign in Ferndale where we can agree to disagree and still come back at the end of the day and, and work on the things that are important to folks. So, thanks, everybody. Um, one thing about the, um, elections in general, I noticed, uh, that in Royal Oak, they had a, uh, an item on their ballot to shorten the time that between when you win an election and when you get sworn in, and the voters overwhelmingly approve that. I also noticed that tonight, Oak Park actually replaced their mayor after 20 years and swore in their new mayor tonight. Um, Ferndale, I think, is unusual in that the, the folks that won last Tuesday don't get sworn in until January, and that strikes me as odd and really not in keeping with the residents' wishes. The residents, uh, elected you in November and I think would probably want you in, uh, as soon as reasonably possible. So, I just want you to know that I've asked the city manager to work with our city attorney to just explore the idea of perhaps, uh, changing our charter to shorten the time between actual elections and the time that the candidates get in. So, more on that to follow, I don't know what will come of that, but I think we're unusual in communities that, that have a two-month lag like that, and this would be a good time perhaps to propose that, because there's, there's no reason to think there would be any problems. But you could envision a day where a mayor lost and still had two months to do whatever he or she felt like doing until the new mayor came in. So, it just strikes me as good government and in instituting the will of the people, that we may want to look at tightening that, and I've asked Dan to, to research, uh, what other cities are doing and what we may do here as well. Um, I want to congratulate the Chamber of Commerce on an absolutely wonderful gala last week, uh, that many of us were at. Um, our chamber does us proud, and their proudest night of the year is their chamber, it's, it becomes something of an Academy Awards for Ferndale. Lots of businesses and residents received awards that night. If you haven't been to it before, I encourage you to buy a ticket to the gala next year, but congratulations to our chamber, not only on their 75th year in business, but on a wonderful gala last week, uh, as well. And finally, I just want to mention, because Dave, you brought up the, the Ferndale's buy-local ordinance, uh, which did come up during the campaign, because Ferndale does have an ordinance that encourages council, when appropriate, to buy local. And there was a lot of discussion about that, and I actually had to do a little bit more research on the specifics of it myself. And I just, so I just want to share for residents that, what that is, because what you don't want to do is, um, overcharge the city and the taxpayers when it's not necessary, simply to buy local. So, as, as the example came up in that debate, if the local person was charging $100,000 and somebody in Grand Rapids was charging $50,000, clearly that's not in the best interest of, of the city of Ferndale or the residents here to do. But our, our ordinance, just so you know, and for the residents', um, information, so that you know, our, our ordinance says that if, uh, if there are two bids that are within 3% between a Ferndale business and a non-Ferndale business, then council can consider the Ferndale business that was within 3% over the non-Ferndale business, and that's for contracts under $100,000. For contracts over $100,000, that percentage is 1%. So, we can't give a contract to a local company that far exceeds, um, a bid of another company. But if it's close, if it's close, within 3% under $100,000 and 1% over $100,000, we can make the decision that the benefit of using a Ferndale company and the taxes that they pay and the employees that they hire offset the small amount that they didn't win the contract by. And so, just wanted to, so I educated myself, and, and Dave, I'm looking at you, because we, you know, that, this came up in, in the, in the debate, uh, that that's what the local Ferndale buy ordinance is.
I would like to see, like, if there's really a cost structure and this is what it, and how this, this cost structure says that I need that 3%, not just because you can get it, you know, you have to look at that too.
Gotcha, gotcha. But I wanted you to know that that's what it was, 3% and 1%. So, with that, that concludes our eve, our meeting this evening. Meeting is adjourned. Oh, no, not adjourned, thank you very much. Council is going to, at this point, go into closed session for the purpose of a strategy and negotiation session connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement pursuant to Michigan compiled law 15.268, section 8C. Thank you.
We get a motion? Support.
I will eventually learn to do this. Moved by Galloway, supported by Baker, to go into closed session. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilmembers Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you, we are in closed session.